They're confusing that with this idea that we're going to tell children things that are scientifically incorrect. We're going to teach them that sex doesn't exist. That we're going to encourage them to cut off their breasts and their genitals in order to be more themselves. I mean, why are we telling them to chop off body parts to be more of who they are? Isn't that, is that how you're less of who you are?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to another episode of the Keisha King Show where we discuss faith, culture, and politics, all geared towards the next generation. I have for you today, another very, very special guest, and I will let her introduce herself because I think she will do it best. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Nicole Solas.
Hi, Keisha. Thank you so much for having me. Um, I am a mom from Rhode Island, uh, two kids, a two-year-old boy and a six-year-old girl. And I am also here as a senior fellow with Independent Women's Forum.
Thank you so much for joining me, Nicole. Um, why don't you tell everyone a little bit about your story?
Okay, so my name's Nicole. I'm in Rhode Island. I'm a mom, two kids. And um, I'm really a nobody that accidentally became a somebody because of my school and the teachers' union. I am just a regular mom. I stay home with my kids. And when I enrolled my daughter in school, I wanted to know if they were teaching critical race theory and gender theory. My school wouldn't answer my questions and they told me that I had to submit public records requests to answer all of my questions. So when I did submit those public records requests, my school then turned around, put my name on the agenda of a public school committee meeting and had an entire school committee meeting discussing whether they would sue me for submitting the public records request that they told me to submit. So um, it was really crazy. It was like being on trial by my school board. It thrust me into the public eye. Um, I went public with what they were doing to me. And then this whole media ball got rolling and um, suddenly I was, you know, in the national media talking about how my school board attacked me because I was just asking questions about what they were doing. Two months later, the teachers' union then did actually sue me for submitting these same public records requests. And I've been in litigation with them for, I think, seven months now. And I still don't have a decision from the judge on, on whether they should dismiss this case because they just sued me to bully me and harass me. So that's the long story short.
Yeah. It was the, uh, the NEA, uh, teachers' union, right?
Yes, it's the National Education Association. They're the largest teachers' union in the country. They have like $300 million behind them. The Rhode Island branch of the NEA sued me. Um, and their, their basis for the lawsuit is that if, if they um, release public information, which it's all public, they're telling a judge that their teachers will be at risk of harassment. So, right there, that tells you they're definitely teaching critical race theory if they're saying that their teachers are gonna get harassed for releasing, you know, for the school releasing this information.
Right. And they told you to do this. So was it the school that told you to do this? And then, and the NEA that told you to submit these, these records?
It was the school. Um, it was the school committee. It was the principal, the director of curriculum. I talked to as many people as I could over email and the phone. And I mean, everyone was telling me to submit these public records requests. Um, the teachers' union wasn't involved yet. But we, we did have a member of the teachers' union, just like a, a union organizer on my school board. So the teachers' unions and school boards are, are very much in bed together and they do.
Absolutely. So I remember, um, so Nicole and I met eh, in DC. Gosh, when was that? Like, I don't know, five months? Remember, October-ish, something like that last year? And I remember when you were telling your story, you were telling us about, there was like some obscene amount of money that they wanted you to pay, right? Wasn't that? So tell us about that part.
Okay, so the whole, the whole reason why I submitted a lot of public records requests, I submitted hundreds is because when you submit a public records request, they, they're trying to then sell you information. You can't get information without purchasing it. So I realized that I had to submit really small public records requests. So that way I would get a low estimate of money because I couldn't afford to buy all these answers to my questions. The highest um, estimate I got to get information about what they're teaching was $74,000. So this is all information that they could just post online. They could just email it to me. You know, they don't have to charge moms and dads, you know, a price just to know what your kids are learning. But $74,000 was, was pretty high. But then I think someone in another state was charged like, I mean, it was like hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I, I wanna, I remember that. Like, I remember hearing that. Was that? Talked to, we were at Freedom Works, um, a great organization in, uh, at a DC. And I don't know if they were talking about it there or where I heard it, but I wanna say, wasn't it like $900,000?
Yeah, I mean, it was.
Crazy.
So high.
It was, I would, I just remember hearing this and being like, what in the world? So what has this, how has this affected your family? Like, this whole thing? Like, I know being thrust into the public eye is crazy because it happened to me too. But my journey has been, I mean, it's, it's crazy. I get the comments and stuff like that. But um, you know, you, you were just, I mean, I went before the Board of Education and I made a speech. So I got, you know, people can pick up a speech. It's, it's a little bit different. You were literally just trying to get information from your, you know, from your school. You didn't, you didn't, you weren't doing something public. It became public. So what has this been like for your family?
I mean, it, it's been pretty crazy because, you know, we, we just live a quiet life. We're private people. We've never done anything public. Um, you know, none of us have any political connections to anybody. And I say that because like in the beginning, they were accusing me of being some like political operative, like, I mean, like, it, it's just like an overnight change. And, and of course, that was, that was my choice to have a public response because I, I felt that if I was being publicly attacked, that I had to have a public response. I couldn't. So now my day is there. Um, you know, I, I chose not to be a working mom. But now I'm kind of a working mom because, um, you know, and I'm doing this work like pretty much for free. Cause I feel compelled to do it and it's important. And, you know, my reputation is now like inextricably intertwined with it. So it, it can be stressful, but um, I feel like it's the right thing. And, you know, I have a really strong, like my husband and I have a very strong family and we're just, um, you know, I think we're the right people to do something like this just because of who we are.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I'm glad that your family is doing well because, you know, it can be stressful on the family when, you know, you don't know these, sometimes, you know, I'm sure this has happened to you, like I'll do an interview or something and people will like give me death threats or, you know, just say vile wicked things. And you just, I mean, you can't believe like what people will actually say. And sometimes that could be very stressful on the family. I know for me, like I just keep scrolling, like I don't even pay attention to it anymore. But you know, when you're new to this, you're like, you, that instinct that you have, you know, talking about defending yourself, that's the very first thing that you want to do. You wanna go on and be like, wait, no, I, I, you know, I, I didn't say that or that's not what I meant. Or this is all I'm, I'm just trying to fight for my kid. Like this is not some, you know, I'm, there, there's, there's no uh, agenda here.
When people say I have an agenda, I'm like, what is it? Tell me. I don't know. Like, what are you talking? I would love to know what this agenda is. And, you know, I, I haven't received um, like death threats. I haven't been in fear of like my physical safety at all. If I were, I would report every single threat to police and I would pursue each one um, like as much as possible. So, um, you know, I don't know what death threats you've received, but I mean, I, I suggest you report everyone to police. Anyone who is attacking any mom like that should also be held accountable. And I think conservatives have a tendency to, to sort of like, um, you know, be conservative in their responses. You know, one of the things that I think we should be doing more of is, is being more aggressive in our responses to people who are aggressors, right? Like we aggressively defend ourselves.
That's right.
Let anything go.
Yeah, you're right. I, like back then, I, this was like when I first started like um, doing like media and stuff like that. And I, I, I had no clue like what I was doing, but I would definitely, if I ever see that again, I am definitely going to pursue it. And you're an attorney, correct? So I may just have to call you then.
Call the police first.
My workload is full. Thanks, Keisha. But um, do you mind me asking, how many children do you have?
I have a six-year-old girl and a two-year-old boy.
Okay. Are they still in um, public school? Or have you pulled them out or?
I, I took my kindergartner out of public school. She's now in Catholic school and it's a great experience. There's transparency, there's open flow of communication. I don't have to submit a public records request every time I have a question. I could get, I got a tour of the school, which I couldn't get of my public school, even though other people were getting tours. And then my son is, um, he's two, so he's still home with me.
Okay. Um, I recently, so I pulled my youngest daughter out about five years ago now because of crazy stuff that was going on in her public school. And she's a special needs child. So I was very, but she's, um, you know, she can read, write, do math. She's, she's a little more advanced than a lot of other children, but still, you know, developmentally delayed. And I was very concerned about the education that they wanted to give her in public school. They wanted to basically stick her in a corner and have her put balls in a basket all day. And I'm like, what are you, this kid can read and write. And like, you, you are stifling her, her growth here. And so, oh my God, girl, I used to go in there like a raging, I, I've always been feisty. And so, you know, they would see me coming and they're like, oh my God, Miss King, this is meeting is not gonna last an hour. No, this meeting is gonna last as long as I say it was gonna last because you worked for me.
Exactly, exactly.
Girl, I was out of control. Um, but it was such a fight that I realized, and this is even, this is before I even, you know, dived into politics at all. And I realized this system is so big and so corrupt. I'm gonna say corrupt because that's what I believe. That I just, I was like, there is no way I'm going to get them to budge for my kid. And so I had to pull her out. And then about two months ago now, I pulled out my oldest daughter from uh, public school and she's now in a homeschool co-op. And so you hear people on both sides, you know, against school choice. I mean, it doesn't sound plausible that, you know, why Republicans or conservatives would be against school choice. But there are some people out there like that. What, have you seen the pushback against, you know, parents choosing to put their kid in, you know, take them out of the public school system?
Yes, I mean, people that are against school choice, either Democrat or Republican, um, it, it's, that is purely political. This idea that we should support public school at all costs is illogical. Why would you support a public school that's not doing its job, which is to educate children, to make them proficient in reading and math? You know, um, you know, when you think of other institutions that a person might support, say, you know, like, uh, you know, the Catholic Church. And then they had their fallout with, with the, the sexual abuse scandal. It's like, well, some people left. And then others that still supported the church said, okay, I don't support the church doing that. And it's like, now we look at public school and I'm like, well, can't you just at least say that you don't support public school? Their corruption, their inability to educate children proficiently in reading and math. But, but I hear people that are just like, we support public school. It's just like blind allegiance. And I'm like, what are you actually supporting though then? Like, I don't, I don't understand where this um, just blind support comes from. I, I don't get it.
I don't get it either. And especially, you know, all of this evidence that we have been uncovering from people like you, Chris Ruffo, James Lindsay, Lisa Logan. There's tons of people that have been uncovering, you know, the critical race theory, sexually, social emotional learning, pornography in school for crying out loud. And you, I, I don't understand. We are telling everyone, hey, this place is dangerous. It's going to corrupt our children. It's going to show them things that they're not ready for. It's going to, you know, it's not teaching them the very thing that we send them there to get. So it, it, I struggle to understand like on what we're showing you all of why this is wrong. And then you're like, well, let's just, you know, let's just fix the system. I'm like, I don't get it, Nicole. It drives me crazy.
I, I always ask, I say, well, is the person that is opposing school choice, are they, are they getting a paycheck from public school at all? Or do they have a family member getting a paycheck from public school? You know, like, is your opposition to school choice disinterested? Or do you stand profit, you know, by, by not uh, supporting school choice? So I think that's always the first question we should ask of, you know, the real political operatives, right? The real ideologues.
That is a really good point. Um, I'm, I'm mad I didn't think about that myself because I, because I'm always like, follow the money, follow the money. Like, but that's, I guess because a lot of these people are parents. I, you know, I don't think of them in that way, but you're right. Like, maybe they are getting some type of check. Maybe they are the ones who are really getting paid to.
Right, like maybe, maybe they have a cousin that's a teacher or, or, you know, maybe another adult. I, I, I don't know, but I, I just think that people's loyalties can kinda like cloud their better judgment.
Yeah, so true. So um, Governor DeSantis just passed the Stop Woke Act. And also the uh, the Parental Rights in Education bill that they're calling the Don't Say Gay Bill, which is not about that. But anyway, that's what they're calling it. But with the, the Stop Woke Act, um, you know, I, I had the opportunity when he first presented the bill to introduce him and um, listen to him explain the bill. And, you know, I've read the majority of the bill. And I posted because it just, um, it just passed uh, on Twitter. And I'm getting people who are coming after me saying like, oh, you know, like, you, this must be tough for you as a black woman coming after, you know, or standing in allegiance with, you know, the white evangelical. I don't know, all this stupid stuff. But how frustrating has it been? And because your case has been, you know, uh, public and, you know, you got the news, the media and the headlines, changing the narrative of what these bills and what cases like yours, um, what's actually going on? How frustrating is it to try to combat people who won't even pick up, you know, who won't even go and read the damn thing, you know, and see like what is actually going on? How frustrating has that been? I'm sure that it's had, happened to you of trying to mischaracterize you and what's going on with you.
Yeah, well, that was one of the reasons why, why I went public before my school committee meeting e- even happened. Because I knew I had to claim the narrative, right? Because my school board was threatening to sue me. They were having this five-hour meeting all about me. I'm just a mom. And I thought, okay, I need to tell this story before the other side tells the, the wrong story. So I started off on the right foot and, you know, just sheer luck that I, I, I had met someone in media before who was following me on Facebook as I was posting evidence about indoctrination happening in my school district. And then since then, I've just been doing my best to use my social media platforms to combat all of the misinformation. You know, if I see that, um, like, you know, NPR puts out some bogus story about me, I'm going on NPR's Twitter platform. And I'm, and I'm saying, this is what you got wrong. And this is, this shows that you're the liar, you know? So um, I spend a lot of time trying to do that to at least get my voice a little heard. But when it comes to these big legacy media outlets, you know, they're standing on a platform of like millions of people holding a megaphone. And then like I'm standing next to them, you know, trying to shout the truth. You know, uh, you know, it's like, what do they say? They say, um, shout the lie, whisper, no way, uh, shout the lie, whisper the their uh, truth, something like that. So. Right, right. So it's, it's hard, but I think we have to capitalize on our social media to combat that as much as we can.
Yeah, God, you're super smart. That is, that's a very smart, you are, you really are. That's a very smart thing to do. Come out of the gate first, um, you know, before they start, before their, you know, whole campaign can really get going. So that way you can, you know, combat the narrative. Because, you know, it, like you said, these, these legacy media people and, you know, they do, they sit, they have multiple millions of dollars. And they can literally um, tear you down. There's a, a journalist, Cheryl Atkinson. She wrote this book called The Smear. Have you heard of her? Oh gosh, she's a brilliant writer and journalist. And my daughter was act, my oldest daughter was actually reading the book. And, you know, she talks about how they literally like build these campaigns to discredit you so that others won't take you seriously. Like they, they, it's one thing, like if you are ignorant about, um, you know, what something is really about, like what a case is really about or what a, you know, bill is really about. It's another thing when you maliciously are going after somewhat, someone just so your narrative can stick and you can discredit this person. Like I find that that is like a particular evil that, you know, I love free speech. I feel like journalists should not be able to do that though. Like I, what, as an attorney?
I, I don't know. I don't know. It's like my, you know, my, my like legal training really informs my opinion on this. But I, I think really what's going on is we're living in a country now without a free press. Media has always been biased. There's always been liberal media, conservative media. But we're, we're living in this, this new world where, where media is, um, they, they, they like don't do fair and balanced reporting, right? They, they don't, journalists no longer write their stories with a real sense of curiosity and fairness. You know, if there's anyone that has implicit bias in the world, it's definitely legacy media journalists who are, you know, they, they like sold their souls just to make a meager paycheck. I, I sort of imagine that if I wanted to be a journalist, I would have been, you know, believing that I would be uncovering corruption and, and exposing evil at every turn. And now these legacy media journalists are just like stenographers for the regime. You know, it's like they're just writing down whatever the person in power tells them to write down so we can maintain the status quo. I mean, they're literally like, they're, they're like hall monitors. It's like, oh, Keisha, you got a lot. I'm gonna write a hit piece on you. It's like, they're, I was just so pathetic. Now that being said, um, I certainly have cultivated relationships with a lot of people in media that don't have as big as a platform. And they're really the, the true reporters, you know? Legalinsurrection.com did an amazing job helping me get my story out and follow my story. In Rhode Island, we have some good reporters like John Di Pietro and um, like ABC Six is finally, you know, someone that's the local media. That's, that's um, interested in my story and they're still objective and professional. So I think we have a way to go, but I still have hope.
Yeah, it's good to have hope because, I mean, with everything, it can feel so like doom and gloom. And, you know, like I was saying before, it's, the system feels so big, you know, that all of these institutions are huge. You know, and they have, they are, they are legacy. And it can feel like it's, you know, too big to go after. But it's always good to, you know, keep hope alive, you know? So, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that it's important that we, as, as moms and, you know, the people that are being attacked by media, we remember that they're the ones with institutional power. You know, there are these big bullies that have the nerve to use all of their money and resources and institutional power to write pieces about people like you and me. We're not rich. We don't have institutional power. We don't have these huge platforms. And so it's like the greatest gaslight of all time to have, you know, a legitimate oppressor. You're talking about people like you and me that are fighting the oppressor and calling us the oppressor. I mean, it's like, how is it even, how is it even believable to, to like, you know, their average reader?
It's crazy because people just soak it right on up. Like, like back, like this Don't Say Gay Bill. Like literally, first of all, the bill is called Parental Rights in Education. And it literally just says, we don't want sexuality taught to, from pre-K to third grade or gender identity taught from pre-K to third grade. Like who in their right mind would be against that? But it's like, it didn't specify a type of sexuality. It's any sexuality. Like I don't want my five-year-old who just barely graduated from being a toddler to, you know, start learning about sex. I don't care if it's heterosexual sex or not. Like I don't want them learning about any type of sex. I want them to know their ABCs and start learning some basic foundations in math. You know, and the people who are against this and are, you know, throwing on their gay flags and marching into, you know, schools and doing all this foolishness, I'm like, what the freak is wrong with you people? It's pre-K to third grade. Now, I think it could have gone even further than that. Like, I'm like, at least till sixth grade to me. I'm just saying.
I, I agree. I mean, you know, I think we need to maintain our kids innocent as long as possible because that's what makes them stable. It gives them a chance at more stability as they go through their teenage years, right? Like you don't, you don't wanna, you know, confuse a kid as, as soon as possible. How are they gonna fare when, you know, they're really having trouble when they turn 14? But you know, the, the, the Don't Gay, the um, Parents Rights in Education bill in Florida, that is a symptom, uh, calling it the Don't Say Gay Bill. That's a symptom of, of a bigger like disease that's happening. And I'll tell you what I think that is and what a lot of people think it is. The, there are, you know, very extreme trans activists that are, are hijacking the, the gay rights platform, right? The LGB rights platform. And they're using that as a way to say, well, um, this is about being gay. When really it's about being um, transgendered and um, believing in gender ideology, which is a, a different thing than being gay. And there's a division in the gay community because not all LGP agree with the TQIA. So um, and, and I see this a lot, uh, where people are confusing the, uh, you know, you know, being gay, gay rights, gay marriage, which, I mean, I support that, that we, you know, I support gay rights. We have gay marriage. They're confusing that with this idea that we're going to tell children, um, things that are scientifically incorrect. We're going to teach them that sex doesn't exist, that we're going to encourage them to cut off their breasts and their genitals in order to be more themselves. I mean, why are we telling them to chop off body parts to be more of who they are? Isn't that, is that how you're less of who you are? So, um, keep an eye out when you see those, that kind of messaging because I think the other side knows that the transgendered ideology is a hard sell. And so they're using gay rights as cover for that. And they're trying to appeal to people's emotions by saying, well, if you don't support transgendered um, kids and all that comes with it, with the medical abuse, then you don't support gay people. And that's not the case.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's so evil. It is such an evil thing to do, you know, for these young, impressionable kids to cut off their, you know, to have these double mastectomies or to take these hormones that are permanently going to damage who they are. Maybe you won't even be able to produce, reproduce when you come to your senses, because a lot of them do. And realize, oh my God, what have I done to myself? And it is, it is so evil for them to, you know, push this upon children. And girls are suffering a lot with this, um, this whole trans thing, especially around that, that age, that 12 to like 15, 16 year mark. Because a lot of it, you know, the schools are promoting it everywhere. And, you know, girls at that age, we're trying to find ourselves. We're trying, our bodies are going through a quite a change. You know, so many things are happening. We wanna be accepted. We wanna be liked. We want attention. All these things that girls just naturally do. And then you, you, another thing, a part of being a girl, you know, we have this like sort of uh, village kind of mindset. And so we're like, well, I don't want my friend, my friend is saying that, you know, she feels like a boy or whatever. I don't want my friend to feel bad if I don't agree with that. And so they kinda slowly uh, navigate over to that side. And it's like, they're not really, none of these kids are really understanding. They just think it's cool. And they just think it's a, you know, a, a fun thing to be doing as kids. And it's, it is, I, I think we are literally destroying the next generation of leaders, wives, mothers. Um, it's, it's, it's unfathomable, fathomable. I just cannot believe that so many people, moms, who are, you know, you see it. They're, oh, they're on the Twitter. They're, they're, they're participating. I, I just cannot. I can't wrap my head around how adults are in lockstep with this thing. What do you think that's about? Like, why aren't, we're the feminists. Where are the one-feminists? You know, like, I don't understand. Nicole, help me out.
Okay, so I think there are two things happening. I think you have parents um, that think that that is an issue that other people have. And you can easily support transgenderism and all of the medical abuse that comes with it, if you don't know about it. And, you know, you're just gonna support it because you think that, okay, some, there's a small minority of kids that have gender dysphoria. And I wanna be empathetic and, and support them. And I think it's important to be empathetic and, and support kids that have mental health issues. But then we have other parents that get caught up into this because they have their doctors telling them that if your kid is having gender dysphoria or if they don't like their bodies and they're going through. That if your kid is having gender dysphoria, or if they don't like their bodies and they're going through. All of the normal issues that you go through when you're a teenager. We have doctors, mental health professionals, school guidance counselors. That are telling parents it's because they're transgendered and that the only answer to that is affirmation only. So in all, in all other, you know, body dysmorphic conditions like anorexia, um, you know, like. Yep, uh, like, you know, anything where you do self harm, that you have exploratory therapy where we say, okay, let's try to get to the root cause. Of why you feel this way and why are you, um, you know, engaging in self harm practices? And only with gender dis- dysphoria do we now say, well, we're not gonna explore why you have this gender dysphoria. We're just gonna affirm that you are definitely the opposite sex.
Yeah.
It, I don't understand that part. It seems like it, like an unconscionable, um, um, like left turn from the standard of care that we apply in all other. Therapies of similar disorders. And then, so then parents who are not doctors, mental health professor, uh, mental health professionals. They just go, oh, okay, this is what I'm supposed to do. Well, I love my kid. And then they get emotionally blackmailed because. You have schools, teachers, mental health professionals telling you that if you don't do affirmation only. You don't flatter to agree that your kid is the opposite sex, your kid's gonna commit suicide. And so they hold you hostage and, and they convince you that your kid's gonna die if you don't medically abuse them. And that I think is something that is gonna take, I hope not too long to uncover, but I mean, I think this is as big as. The lobotomies that we did in the fifties and sixties. I think it's gonna blow up the way the Catholic church abuse scandal blew up. And I, I think it's just still underground because people don't have a lot of information on it and information's being suppressed. And um, you know, you're getting attacked if you're trying to just ask questions about it.
Yeah, you can't even ask a question. I mean, something as serious as. You know, cutting off your body part as a, an, a minor cutting off their body, body part. You can't even ask a question about it. You are, you're transphobic if you just wanna know like what's going on here. I think.
Parents can lose custody. We have parents losing custody. Yep. And then the kids go into the custody of the state where now the state is gonna push this even harder. And you know, meanwhile, your child is probably suffering from a legitimate mental health issue.
Right.
And it's all being corrupted by this transgender ideology.
It's so crazy. So, so unbelievable. I think that there is a, a bigger. Agenda here. I, I think along with critical race theory, this gender queer, uh, queer theory. Which, which with the trans, um, trans transgender falls under, I think. Uh, it's all to make, to tear down America. I think it's a Marxist communist, um, agenda. These ideas, you know, ha- they have been around for a very long time. They're new to most of us. But it's an old game that Marxists have played for decade, for, for, oh, you know, for many, many decades. And um, have you, do, are you, what do you think about that idea? Like, do you agree, disagree?
Yes, I, I do think that um, cultural Marxism has always been um, battling our American values. And um, it, it's always, it's always been in academia, right? And, and people thought that. Oh, all these kids that are majoring in like gender studies, whatever, they're gonna graduate and not get a job, but you know, well, now they have the job of. The mental health professional that's telling your kid that they're transgendered. And now we got people that believe in D E I. They're, they're now like deciding what curriculum your school is gonna have. So, um, you know, twenty years ago, we really misjudged. How powerful these people were gonna be. Um, and I remember when I was in college, um, now that I look back, I didn't know it then. It was in my liberal arts education. I mean, I, 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 it's, it's been there forever. And, and I always thought it was sort of like the weird teachers. That lived in the ivory tower and were fundamentally disconnected from reality. But now we see how these um, academic ideas have been. Pushed out into policy and law. Um, and I don't think we anticipated that pipeline from academia. To government and now even now the legal system.
Yeah.
So, um.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't think we were, certainly conservatives were asleep at the wheel. Um, I think many people knew exactly what they were doing and many just kinda, you know, you really just didn't know. So did you experience these things? Was it in your um, graduate classes? Or where, like where, what part of your education did you experience?
Um, I mean, I, I learned about critical race theory in law school and um, just disparate impact theory, which is really the, the driver behind all these ideas. That if a law affects, if a law or policy affects um, a minority group in a different way, like, you know, they. You know, are, are imprisoned more, or they are just impacted by any law or policy more, more. The idea is, is that this law or policy. Um, might be, or now we basically just say it's definitely racist, right? Like there's something wrong with the law or policy when that's not necessarily the case. And you have to look at each individual case. Um, but in terms of my uh, undergrad, I mean, I remember having. I, I majored in theater and English and I remember my theater professor one day walking into class, I think it was like a. Uh, God, I mean, like, it's just a theater class. I don't even remember what it was. And she was like, I have a proposal for all of you guys. Everyone is racist. And I'm just, I remember being like nineteen, I just remember being like, what? I, I thought I was gonna learn about costumes today. What the heck are we doing? Like this is so, and of course everyone was like, uh. And, and like meanwhile, my class was very diverse. We had, we had Latino, black, white, Jewish. I mean. So I was like, and, and I, and I thought to myself, maybe I should ask her, who are you racist against then? You know, try to turn it on them. Be like, well, okay, let's get to the point here. So I definitely remember. Things that happened in college that if I were who I was now, I would have definitely complained to my, you know, the dean and just really nipped that, that in the bud.
Yeah, and that's the thing. That's a really uh, interesting point you bring up because when you're young, what are you nineteen? I mean, you don't know. You're just like, that's your professor. You think like, okay, I'm supposed to listen to this person. You're not, you're just, you're still trying to find yourself. You're still so like. You know, trying to just figure it all out. You don't know what that is actually coming from. You have no idea this agenda, you know, you don't know. But the, the idea, this is what trips me out about critical race theory. The idea, it's so stupid that I have to, that I have to laugh about it. It's not funny, but it is, it's absurd. The idea that because I'm black or because you're, because you're a skin color, whatever that may be. That you automatically fall into some predetermined category. Because of your race is literally racism. And they teach it as, no, like it's some, you know. Theory that should be like, uh, you know, adorned and admired and oh, look what we've done. And oh, it's, it's critical race theory and. We should teach us. It's like, are, don't you realize that that is racism? Like, I don't understand why this is not plain and simple. Again, like back to common sense. If you are making a judgment on some, about someone because of their race, that's racism. Like. What are we missing here?
I, I know. I, I think that um, I think the other side is bluffing. I think they know it's racism. And I think that they, yep, I think that they are, I think they know it's racism, but I think they think it's racism for good. I think, cause I, and I've heard them talk to me online where they go, well, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four just didn't work. Like, like we tried colorblind, um, we tried a colorblind culture and it didn't work. And people of color are, are still not at the same level as white people. So therefore there must be something wrong with white people. And they're sort of just willing to abandon all of these like beautiful crowning achievements of the civil rights era.
Right.
To say, so therefore I give up and I think I opt for racism. And you're just like, what? What? I don't, um. Okay, so that's my personal theory that they, that they just, they're so morally absolute that they think that the ends justify the means. So I, I think that they, they truly believe they're doing something good. I think those are the kind of ideologues we're, we're dealing with. And I think that they're willing. To do a lot of bad if they think it's gonna achieve something good. And that's really the, the, the delusion of.
Yeah, which it is a delusion. That's a, that's a good word for it. And you know, not only do they um. Forget the achievements of, of, of uh, the Civil Rights Act. They forget the achievements of black Americans throughout American history. It's like you have to suspend a lot of achievement. To boil us down to just like oppressor and oppressed, you know, you, that, that is such a. An insult to all of, you know, all of Americans are, you know, American ancestors who have fought. For, you know, civil rights and fought to make their lives better. You know, was it a perfect system? No, what system is perfect? But it's a slap in the face to, you know, people who came before this, before the Civil Rights Act, people who were achieving after the Civil Rights Act. I was on the uh, Dr. Phil show and the expert that they brought on there was, you know, trying to tell me that, oh, well, you must not have seen the. The uh, statistics on uh, black, you know, black employment versus um. You know, white people being employed. And I'm like, uh, hello, we're sitting on a show from a black woman who is a billionaire.
Well, that's the thing, like people of color are like all, they, they, they have power, like they're in powerful institutions, right? And you know, but they, they're obsessed with this idea that in order to believe that people of color have power. It has to be like this homeostasis where um, all of the groups have equal outcomes, all of the racial groups.
Equity.
Right, you, thank you. That's the word, of course. But you know, we must have equity. When really it, that discounts the idea of the individual. Of course, there are gonna be individuals that don't have power. That, that don't have success. But I don't believe that that is because of their skin color. You're gonna have people.
Cause you're not racist, Nicole.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, like this, this is ridiculous. And what? You know, all the black folks that actually buy into this idea, that's what, you know, white folks who buy into it, I think. A lot of times they're buying into it out of guilt. I mean, I don't know, I could be, I, I think some of them absolutely know what they're doing. They are these, they are Marxist communists. They know exactly what they're doing. They don't really, they don't really. They don't care about your race. They don't care about your sexual identity. They, they're on a mission that is to. Uh, to tear down the system. They're on their Marxist thing. But some of the, I think most white folks are like, oh, well, like just, you know. Kinda like the girl who doesn't wanna abandon her friend. Like, oh gosh, well, I don't wanna be wrong. Like, I guess I need to. You know, this kind of violates every principle that I believe in, but I guess I, okay, like, I guess. And, and you know what, black folks who believe in, who, who are proponents of critical race theory, I think, now here's where I, let's say, follow the money. They are either, they, they get paid off of, you know, being sort of the, the, the liberal voice that keeps the black folks like. You know, in line and in lockstep like the Jesse Jacksons and the Al Sharptons and Kimberly Crenshaw's and all, and these types of folks. And it's like, when you hear these things, if somebody was to tell your child that because they're black. They are permanently a victim, oppressed, whatever you wanna call it. I'm sorry, the moment I heard this, I'm like, oh, hell no. You know, like you, you don't tell me that about my kid, you know, I, I just. You know, I don't know, this stuff like blows my mind that people don't actually think about what. They are essentially saying to you.
Yes, and, and, and to think about who is saying these things to you. Because you talked about Al Sharpton, Kimberly Crenshaw. How much money are these people making to say these things to you and your kids, right? We, you know, they're, the other side is very diligent about questioning the credibility and authority of people like you and me. You know, who don't, who again, don't have power, but then all these other people that are, you know, making bank off of lying to them. They, they fail to question themselves and that's really the, the saddest part.
Yeah, Joy Reid, she's another one. She is about, like dumbest people I have ever seen on national TV. I'm like, I don't understand how this woman has a job. I really don't understand how she has it. Who believes this woman? She says the most outrageous things. I'm like. How do you, how are you employed? Like what?
It blows my mind. It's amazing, you know, and listening to her in particular, it's just like militant and droning. I mean, there's no cerebral aspect to her when she's talking. But I, I think a lot of these people that are making a lot of money off of this, I think they get themselves into a situation. Not that I think they don't like this situation, where, okay, you're now living in DC. You, um, you know, your whole life revolves around this job that you now have, which is to lie to America. Um, you know, you got your retirement coming, you got bills to pay and for you, it doesn't make sense to stop lying. You're kind of now like dependent on lying. Your paycheck is lying. So I don't know if these people, um. I, I don't think they care that they're like, you know, slaves to their paycheck that makes them lie, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, logistically, I don't think it would be very easy for someone like that to have an honest turnaround.
Yeah, that's true. Like Don Lemon, when he was like, the problem with America is white men as he sleeps next to a white man every freaking night.
So, I, I, I don't, yeah, I mean, that right there, I, you just can't take these people seriously.
Oh my God, even Kamala Harris, her husband is white, like all Cornell West, white, white spouse. All these people who, you know, run their mouth about, you know, white supremacy and it's like right around the corner and it's coming to hunt you down. And you sleep next to a white person every night. It's like.
Yeah.
Stop.
Yeah, they're, they're telling us that like white supremacists are hiding under our bed. And I'm like, you got one sleeping in your bed? Like what? I don't understand.
Oh my God, it's hilarious. It's like, huh, did you see um, yesterday when Juicy, Juicy Smollet? He was um, he was actually sentenced to prison uh, for, I think it was a hundred and fifty days. It's like, I don't know, four, five months or something. I don't know, whatever that is, five months or whatever. And um, he stands up and he's like, I just want everybody to know that I did not commit suicide. I want everyone to know I did not commit suicide. So if something hap- and the judge is like, uh, okay. He's like, and then he puts his fist in the air. And then I was just like, this is. Like everybody is laughing at you, like the, the same way we laughed at Don Lemon. We're laughing at you because you sound so ridiculous. They won't give it up, Nicole. They won't, they will not give up the lie.
That's crazy. Is he um, is, is he making a reference to Epstein that, like, is he predicting that he thinks someone is gonna try to kill him in prison by hanging him?
That's a good point, but this is what I thought. I thought he was trying to say like, you know, the system is, you know, um, against black men. So if I don't make it out alive, you know, this is just another uh, instance of where a black man is gonna be murdered by police, the system, you know. That's what I was thinking, but I don't, that's, that's what I got.
Okay, cause, cause I was gonna say, like, this guy is not at the level of power and wealth as Epstein was. So I, I, that's like just more evidence of his delusion. If he were, you know, comparing himself to that. But, but yeah, I mean, they, they don't let go of the delusion. But hey, when your identity becomes the delusion, no one can expect you to let go of it, right? I mean, you completely grab your identity up in this.
Yeah, when your identity becomes the delusion, you're stuck. Because, oh God, now I feel like we need a whole, like more time. Cause that deep, what you just said, when your identity becomes the delusion. Identity is so, it's so in, it's so foundational in who you are. And I think that's why, you know, when they try to tear away like race identity, I don't, that's nonsense to me. Like skin color is not a. That is, it, it doesn't think, it doesn't rationalize. Like it's literally levels of melanin. It's not that deep. Like we put so much emphasis on something that is so stupid. But anyway, um, when you're talking about male, female. When you're talking about being a girl or a boy and what that means and you know, how diff- your, your brain is literally different when you're a girl from a boy. Skin color doesn't have all these, you know, biological differences like that. Um. When you are trying to rip that away and now you've come into this new identity. That, that can be life changing, like, and now your, your, your delusion, like you just said, your identity has become your delusion. You're stepping into a whole other psychological. I don't know, like that's, that's.
It's an alternate reality.
Yeah, like that.
And you know, that, you know, the, the gender ideology is so evil and so pernicious because. It, it's, it's telling kids that, you know, biological sex isn't real. And then they're trying to disembodied. Kids from their biology because, you know, your sex is, you know, XX or XX chromosome or XY chromosome. But what we, what they're not talking about is how your sex is, is not just, um, you know, your genitals. It's not just the clothes you wear. You know, it's so funny that gender, gender. the clothes you wear. You know, it's so funny that gender, gender ideology i- in, in a purported, um, effort to disconnect gender stereotypes from gender, they just reinforce them. Because they're saying that in order to be the opposite sex, you should just dress like it. You should use pronouns, you know, cut off your genitals. But what they, what they deliberately obfuscate from kids is that your sex actually informs other biological and physiological processes, right? There's evidence that female brains are different than male brains in various aspects. Um, you know, women have different diseases. They're more likely to get different diseases than men because we have different organs that, you know, it's not just our, you know, like, I don't have a prostate.
Right.
I mean, so there are things that can happen biologically that move beyond just your, um, identity as a man or a woman. And that is why it's so dangerous because you're endangering your life. You're endangering like, and, um, you know, I just heard this like gut wrenching story from a mother named Abigail Martinez from Los Angeles. And her daughter ended up committing suicide because she was indoctrinated into this transgender ideology. Um, you can listen to the story at, at heritage.org and I've been promoting it on my Twitter. Um, and it, you know, it, it's so just evil because they're convincing parents that if you don't make your child transgendered, if you don't give them the hormones and the surgeries and the pronouns, that that's what's going to hurt your kid. When really we're seeing that it is the transgender treatment that is hurting your kid.
Right.
And it leads them to be disconnected from their bodies even more. So we have this, this problem where kids are saying, I am disconnected from my body, right? I don't like my body. And then you have this treatment that exacerbates that disconnection from their body. It makes it worse.
Yes.
And now they're disconnected from their body. They don't know who they are. And next thing that happens is they get disconnected from the people that love and support them, and they're even more isolated. And, you know, the, the psychological process as you get, um, you know, closer and closer to feeling alone and isolated and not having an identity is so scary. You just enter this alternate psychological realm. You feel totally alone and you got doctors and teachers and schools telling you to be even more alone. Now it's even more different. And it's just so unnecessary and preventable.
It, it, it's, it's hard to believe that people do this to children especially, like, and they just keep pushing and pushing and pushing until something like, um, what happened to this young girl, until they commit suicide. Like, what is it going to take for these people to stop? I mean, I, I do, I think we know it's more parents like yourself standing up and speaking out and pushing back, like you said, you know, turning that narrative, turning the narrative around and, um, saying, hell no. I mean, absolutely, you know, there, there is an instinct that mothers have to protect and defend our children. And I truly believe that that will be that they, 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 they've overplayed their, their hand. When they started messing with our kids, it's like, I don't care what, I don't care if I have to sleep in a cardboard box. You know, you will not have my child. You will, I, I refuse. You know, it's a sacrifice for me to, you know, for my daughter to be in a co, a homeschool co-op and my youngest daughter to be in private. That's not easy. I'm a single parent, you know, I, I have to pay for, you know, I, I do have step up for students that helps with my youngest daughter. But, you know, the, the homeschool co-op, like I, there's nothing for that. And it's a sacrifice, but it's like, but that's what moms do, right? You know, we don't care what we have to do. We're going to protect our kids. And I think the more people start to talk about this and see the evils of it, you will go back to saying, not my baby and, and, and protect them from these wicked people. So.
Yeah, I totally agree. You know, we didn't, we didn't become moms just to, you know, be too scared to stand up for them. It's like, I don't care what people names people call me. I, I didn't become a mom to be like the most popular person in the room. And at the end of the day, all I care about is that my kid knows that I didn't just sit back while all of this toxic destructive ideology was going to brainwash them and really ultimately separate our kids from us. And, um, you know, we didn't have kids just to lose them.
Exactly. Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much, Nicole, for coming on. This was such a great conversation. Like, I don't even think, I knew it was going to be good just from our little interaction that we had at Freedom Works, but I did not expect it to be this good. You have given us some great uh, ways to think about a lot of this stuff. So thank you so, so much for that. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you too. Thank you for doing this work and giving more moms platform because Kisha, you're a natural, like, you're amazing. I hope you just like, keep getting more work and get a show and, you know, you're, you're being the light. So thank you.
Okay, Nicole. So tell us what else you have going on and where people can find you online and anything else you want us to know.
Uh, well, you can follow me on Twitter. My Twitter handle is Nicoletta0602 and that's spelled N I C O L E T T A 0602. Um, I'm also represented by the Goldwater Institute and you can find information there. And I also highly recommend legalinsurrection.com who's been following my story from the very beginning.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, everybody. Well, don't forget to like, comment and subscribe. I'm sure you're all going to want to comment on this one. So please do, uh, keep the conversation going in the comments and we will see you next time. Bye bye.